Glenn, welcome to the Eugene City Council January 22nd Works Session on Civic. And as I understand it, our staff is just sitting there listening to the conversation.
Yes, ma'am.
And I guess the question for you all is, do you want to proceed right to the discussion of the intended motion? Seems like. So George, you want to begin?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I move that the city manager shall immediately inform the District 4J that we are modifying our initial contingent offer. The City of Eugene's revised purchase offer of 4.5 million to 4J for the Civic Stadium property is now contingent on other parties committing sufficient funds and providing a plan to finance, renovate, operate, and maintain Civic Stadium within six months of 4J's acceptance of the city's offer. The other party's initial financial commitment should be sufficient, in the council's opinion, to rehabilitate the grandstand playing field and to reopen for active use as a sports and entertainment complex. The council will decide within one year of 4J's acceptance of the city's offer whether to accept the financial commitment and the plan. Otherwise, the city will withdraw its offer to 4J. And I'll speak to it if I get a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Thank you. I think this is really the way to go. It allows reasonable time for the submission of proposals, and it allows us time, sufficient time, to analyze those proposals. There's virtually no financial risk to the city. The offer would be withdrawn if council did not approve credible plans to rehabilitate and find a credible management firm to run the place. So that's good. There's no big commitment of city funds here. Our contingencies, just like the other proposers, would start on the day of selection. The way that our offer stands now is we've kind of uselessly, senselessly handcuffed ourselves by having to have everything in place before, well, by next Monday. And that's frankly impossible. The other two proposers' contingencies start on the day of selection. And they do have contingencies, the main ones being timely approval of metro plan amendments and zone changes. So they have contingencies too, but theirs don't start till the day that they're selected. And this puts us in a better competitive position, really. The one thing I might be willing to do is change that phrase, "The council will decide within one year," maybe knock that down to nine months. Because I think probably, I'm reading this again, the third or fourth time, I think that three months would be enough time for us to review any plans that can come forward. Thanks. I'd like to be in every round, ma'am. Thank you.
So I have George Polling, Mike Clark, Betty, and Claire in the queue, and I just want to ask a couple questions. Glenn, does this put us in, is this secure enough to protect us from being...
Stop.
Holding the bag, so to speak, if the funds don't come in?
After reading the motion, I had a question as to the intent, and let me ask George that, and then I'll be able to answer your question. My understanding of your motion, George, is essentially, we will tell 4J, we'll pay 4.5 million if you choose our offer, and within, whether it's 12 months or nine months, we then tell you that we are ready to proceed.
Yes.
So then the answer, ma'am, is this does not put the city at any financial risk the way it's written because the council will have, the way it's written now, 12 months after 4J accepts our offer to decide whether to proceed. And if the council says sometime during the next 12 months that the city does not want to proceed, this does not contain any financial commitment to 4J. So the only real commitment will be the time you or staff spend analyzing the proposals that come in. But there's no money transferring hands to 4J.
Okay. And a second question I have, and I don't know who's the right one to answer it, is I think I understood from George and other discussion that we think we're allowing, with this proposed motion, that we are allowing ourselves the same flexibility that is already being enjoyed by the other two proposals in terms of their ability. If their financial, the way they think it's going to, they can handle it financially does not come to fruition. They have a contingency for how to get out of it. And this is giving the city the same, that same thing. And I just want to understand how you see that.
I'll start, and then maybe you can finish. We haven't seen the specific contingencies that are in the other two offers, but they both have, from what we've seen, both have something in place to allow them to get through the appropriate demolition and permitting processes. Both the Y and Fred Meyer have committed to pay $10,000 a month to 4J during that time, as I understand it. So 4J would be getting some income during that time from the other two proposers.
Okay. Do you have anything to add?
Yep, Sarah answered it.
All right. Thank you for answering those questions. For me, George Polling.
Yeah, first of all, several years ago, as a council, we decided not to have any surprises. And once again, we're faced with a motion that comes out minutes before the meeting. And to me, I think that's disrespectful to the rest of the members of the council, whether you're in favor of this motion or not. That's not the way to do business. Second, after reading the newspaper articles about the other offers, and that's all I have to go by, originally my thought was that perhaps Fred Meyer would be the best one for the community because it increases the tax base. But the more and more I read, the more and more I personally favor the Y proposal. I think our proposal is a waste of the park bond money, as well as a lot of people throughout the community I've been hearing from. There are not a lot of people that are unhappy with us proceeding this way. So I'd like to offer a substitute motion. I move to direct the city manager to immediately withdraw our proposal from the Civic Stadium property.
I'll second that for discussion.
Moved and seconded.
Again, all I'd like to say is there's enough people in the community, this is not a strongly favored proposal on the part of the city council. There's not the community support that it appears to be, or other people seem to think there is. And the more and more I hear from people, the more and more I believe that we are making a very terrible mistake by spending park bond monies. Because basically, the comments I've been receiving is, if we had known the money was going to be spent on Civic Stadium and turning it into a sports complex, they would have never voted for the park bond money. And there's been a lot of people that said that they will not support any other park bond fund, funds either, because of this action that we are about ready to take. So that's the reason why I'm asking that we withdraw our proposal. That, and also my own personal belief, is that there are two better offers on the table. One is better than the other, in my opinion. So I think we should immediately withdraw from this.
George Brown?
Thank you, ma'am.
Oh, did you want to speak to this motion? Because I had you in the other queue for the other one.
I'll wait.
Well, yeah, I'd just like to answer Council Polling's concerns here. You know, I've been working day and night on this. I worked all weekend. It would have been better, yes, to have this out last Friday so people could have thought of it. But we knew we were going to talk about Civic Stadium today. So, I mean, you know, it's not really a surprise that the idea, we were going to talk about moving it forward. I think we all kind of knew we were going to think about amending our initial contingencies. So in that respect, it's not really a big surprise. And I just have to say that 4J's the one that's going to decide, whatever our personal opinions are, they're the ones that are going to decide. So all of this stuff is contingent on 4J picking the city. And I think that, you know, it's anybody's guess how they're going to go on this. It's kind of like a horse race. You just don't know who they're going to pick yet. So this is the only option of the three that preserves the property for public use. And so I won't be, obviously, I won't be able to support Council Polling's motion. Thank you.
Okay. I've been trying to manage the old queue with the new queue, but we have, so I've got Mike and Claire and Chris in this queue.
Thank you, ma'am. Early on, three, four years ago, even more, I think I can honestly say I was one of the louder voices on the idea of preserving this stadium as a community asset. And I still would love to find a way to do that in the best possible world. But the reality of the world we're in today makes us, or puts us in a position to make difficult choices. This is another one of them. Our budgeting process is one of them. I could say, you know, yes to this, as many might today. But the reality that we started talking about this in '07 and '08, and six, seven years passed, and no one has stepped forward to do this, and the significant folks that have been discussed as maybes haven't done so yet, I don't believe it'll happen in this amount of time. I don't. I don't believe someone will step forward and relieve the city of the financial risk that we simply can't afford to take, no matter how long of a deadline we set. The M's couldn't sell out enough tickets when they were having 3,000 people a game in order to maintain a business there. Soccer won't be able to either. It's very popular, but it won't sell enough to maintain it as a business. We can't afford to get stuck with the cost. It's a lousy choice, and nobody wants to make it. But I believe, no matter what sort of motion we put forward today, the school district's not going to choose us. They'd be crazy to do it. Frankly, I think they'd be irresponsible to do it, when there's so much money on the table from a going concern that can add both to the city's tax base and to the education of our children. It's a choice of priorities. And I can't support the motion because I don't want to keep drawing this out and making it a more difficult decision for everyone else, when we know we can't afford to do this. I do have a question to the manager. If we vote in favor of this motion, and the district makes a choice here in the next few weeks, will we then be on the hook for mothballing costs from that day until some future point where we will or won't have enough money to guarantee our risk so that we do or don't pull out of the deal? Will we be on the hook from mothballing in costs of insuring that facility?
First, the motion that's on the table is actually George Polling's, which is to...
I was speaking to George Brown's motion, I'm sorry.
And in answer to your specific question, under George Brown's motion, the city would not be on the hook during this 12-month period because we will not own the facility. We just have a contingent purchase offer out there. So the costs are still on 4J.
Thank you, ma'am.
So now I have Claire, Chris, and Greg in the queue. And Betty, you were in the other queue. Do you want to be in this queue? You were in the other queue. Do you want to be in this queue?
The discussion seems to have changed to the other motion.
No, it's not. So I'm asking you, because I don't want to...
No, I want to discuss the other motion.
All right. Claire.
Yeah, so I still think it's of value for the city to keep its offer, and whether we modify it or not. And I'm sorry to hear that there are folks who don't think it's a good use of the park bond funds. Those funds have helped the city purchase a number of great sites for parks, some of which are getting developed, some of which are sitting there waiting to be developed. So I really do think this is a proper use of those funds to preserve a piece of public land, land that's right now in public trust, and we would continue to hold it in that way, even if it was managed by another organization. And if we're able to identify a viable entity to renovate the site, I think the city will benefit from those results, not just the immediate surrounding community, but the city and the region as a whole. So I will not support Council Polling's motion.
Chris?
Thank you. I appreciate the desire to provide clarity, and that's what we're trying to do. And I think Council Polling's motion was to try to get to clarity. Since the original proposal that is currently on the table is slated to fish or cut bait by the 26th, I don't feel the need to support your motion, because I think we're going to get to something that was part of the original intent. So I don't, I don't think I'll vote for that. But with that in mind, that doesn't mean that I am supportive of the alternative when it comes to that, because for me, this also lacks clarity. What I liked about the motion that we already passed and is on the table is it's clear, it's simple, and it makes a definitive position for the city. And for me, what I was looking for, what I thought was an extremely important element, was the commitment. And what we're doing now is we're saying, well, the commitment's not there, so we're going to backtrack and go from solid to talk. Because that, for me at least, that's what this feels like. The original motion was, put your money on the table, demonstrate commitment, and we'll be a partner. And now we're saying, I don't see any money, I don't see any commitment, other than talk, so we're going to retreat, we're going to back off. I don't think that does us a service in terms of our fiscal responsibility, but also in terms of our goal as a city, to be a responsible partner. I'm not seeing the partnership. I'm seeing talk, but I'm not seeing action. There's, you know, been discussions, well, it's this reason, or it's that reason. I understand that. But money talks. And if I want to be a partner, if we were doing this in development, the other partner brings something to the table. They bring money, they bring banking, they bring a whole variety of things. I'm not seeing that here. And I think the intentions are very, very laudable. I appreciate that. I wish luck, but the point is, we want it to demonstrate and see a commitment to act as our partnership, and it's not there. And to say, oh, well, that's not there, so I'm going to back off, is not in our best interest. So reluctantly, I'm not going to support any of the motions today. I like what's on the table. It's simple, it's clear, and it makes our position very well-known.
Greg?
I'm not sure exactly which is working. Exactly right now... Are we on, still on substitute motions, speaking to that?
Yeah, we are.
You know, at this point, I've had, been contacted by various members of the community over the last week about what the city's position is on this, what the offer is, where we're at on this. And, you know, I have, I understand where George is coming from with this motion, because I've had the same reservations. And with Chris, I agree that, you know, we have a motion in place. We actually, we already have an offer with a contingency in place that we did back on November 27th. The only thing that I would be looking in terms of modification of any of this would be the modification of the 5.5 million contingency in some form or fashion, only because there are people who have told me that I trust, and I'm not going to name names here, that there is a possibility of making our offer a more viable offer if that contingency is lowered. Now, that does not mean that the district is going to accept the offer. So basically, we're sitting here contemplating something that probably, or could be moot if the school district decides to choose one of the other two offers, which appear to be a little more lucrative than them at this point, from what I read in the newspaper. So if we, I would be willing to move off the 5.5 to another amount that is more reasonable in order for somebody to come forward and make a substantial commitment to this particular project. And if that does not materialize, then, you know, we are where we are, it stands where it stands, and let the ships fall where they may. And it's up to the school district at that point.
Okay. I think we're ready to vote on Council Polling's substitute motion. All those in favor? One in favor and opposition? Seven in opposition. It does not pass. We're back to the main motion, and I've got Betty in the queue.
Thank you. Okay. I could not support that motion. I think it's important, what I would like to do is remove the contingency and purchase the property. I think this is our chance to save a historic structure, and that is what we should do. And there may be some risk involved, but certainly the people who built it in the first place had some risk. And anything good that's been done involved risk, including our Ridgeline Trail, which happened about the same time as the stadium. And so I can't support either the other motion either. To me, that is equivalent to saying we aren't really making an offer. I want us to make a real offer and not have the school board say, well, they said they might do it in six months. And I think they would very easily and almost certainly destroy that. I think, I trust the people who are supporting saving Civic, and I think they have the brains and the determination and the initiative to do what they say they can do. And sure, we're taking a little risk, but anything worthwhile involves some risk, and it involves some courage to take a risk. So I will vote for George Brown's motion, but could, well, okay, I'll make a substitute motion to remove the contingency.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I just need to know which contingency you're removing. Is it the 5.5?
The one that is, the 5.5.
Once again, I can't go quite that far, but I'm willing to discuss options in terms of the number. But at that point, somebody's got to be able to come up and step up and put their money where their mouth is. So I can't support this particular motion, but I can support us maybe doing something in the middle of that.
George Brown?
I just have a question about Council Taylor's motion. You're referring to our current proposal? Yes. And you want like the five and a half million removed as an exact figure? Yeah, well, that makes sense, because it's, you know, not really based on objective data. But then, the other part of the motion is 60 days. Everything's got to be done by 60 days, which is Monday. And so that would remain. Well, that really doesn't move it forward, because we haven't, we don't have, we haven't received any business plans to review. So I seconded your motion for discussion, but I don't see how we can support it, because it doesn't remove the other contingency. It just removes the five and a half million contingency. And I would just like to point out that the substitute motion that I put forward today does remove that exact figure. It just, it says sufficient funds to, you know, renovate, operate, and maintain. We don't know exactly what those funds are. We know that it's about a credible figure from a, you know, worldwide construction company who did Hayward Field and built Riverbend Hospital, that it would be 3 million, well, 2.1 million to renovate the stadium, and then about 900,000 to put in a new field. So that's 3 million. I would suggest that after we, if, you know, the city, first thing we should do is if 4J accepts our offer, then we would go back to, say, Turner, or perhaps the Chamber of Commerce subcontractors, and do an update on that estimate. Because it's possible that building costs, certain materials have probably gone up, maybe others have gone down. Get that figure updated. That's why there's no, we don't really know exactly. We have a baseline of what we know the minimum will be. It may have gone up a little bit since then. So I didn't put any figures in here, because you never know until you have another estimate. So this motion does remove that contingency, but it also allows the project to move forward beyond next Monday, where it will die if we don't get rid of the 60-day contingency. And this motion does that also.
Counselor George Polling, and then Alan Zalanga, and then I think Betty wants back in the queue.
Well, since the majority of the council is determined to go through with the offer, I for one cannot support removing the contingency, despite how I feel about the original motion that we currently have, we had passed earlier. I think that's the best plan for the city, is to keep that in there as a safeguard, so we don't get stuck holding the bag. Because in my opinion, if somebody comes up with some money, even if it's 5.5 million, it's not going to be enough to renovate, operate, and maintain that facility forever. Eventually, it's going to come back on the city and the park funds, maintenance funds, which we have very limited amount of anyway, to maintain that stadium property. So I will not support Betty's motion, and I can't support the intended motion put out by Council Brown.
Counselor Zalanga.
So to clarify what you're thinking and saying, Betty, this would just remove the financial commitment, but would still require someone to bring forth a financing plan and all those other things before Monday, otherwise we would withdraw our offer. And my understanding is, nobody with financial backing is going to do that. And therefore, this, the result of your offer, or your motion, would be to have the city end up withdrawing its offer.
May I respond?
It's your turn.
Oh, thanks. Though I thought, I had understood that some people had already prepared some business plans. That's what I heard last week. But I will change my motion to say withdraw all contingencies.
And a second?
Second.
All right. So we're back to, and nobody else is in the queue, so I think we're ready to vote on this. All those in favor of Betty?
Point of clarification.
Yes.
What is Betty's motion now?
Is it just to buy it for 4.5 million?
Great. We've had this discussion.
An offer for 4.5 million.
Straight offer, 4.5?
Yes, yes.
Contingencies?
Right. It's a real offer.
All those in favor, please indicate. Two in opposition. Six in opposition. It fails, so we're back to the main motion. Counselor Brown?
Thank you, ma'am. Well, I voted for that, because in the ideal world, that's what we would do, and I really didn't think it would move forward. I would like to address, go back to a couple of things I've heard counselors talk about. Well, I've heard that, you know, our current proposal, not this one, but the one that's on the books now, is clear and simple. I think Counselor Pryor said that, and, you know, that's true. It's just unrealistic. The 60-day, it's 60 days to secure financing and get the consent of all your partners and get your bank to agree to loan you money is unrealistic. And also, the 5.5 million dollar figure is unrealistic, because we don't know what it represents. We've heard that, we know that 3 million would go for the rehab, and then the extra 2.5 million has been puzzling to potential proposers all along. They don't know what it's for, and yet they're required to put that in an escrow account or somehow put it under city control. We've been told that, well, that's for maintenance and, you know, management. But nobody says, okay, here's 2.5 million dollars, I'm going to lease this facility from you, and this 2.5 million dollars for you to control, well, that'll be for maintenance, for ongoing maintenance. Nobody does that. You sign a contract with your less E, and they take care of that on a yearly basis. It's prorated out, the whole 20-year lease, or whatever, you know, lease agreement you come to. It's not, you don't require them to have that money upfront for maintenance that's not even necessary at some point in the future. They take care of the maintenance off of their profits from leasing the facility from the city. That's how that works. So that... So that, while it may have been clear and simple, it just wasn't realistic. And this... My motion today makes it more realistic because then we have the... There's no specific amount of money. We look at the plans that come in, and we look at, you know, operators' plans. There will be donations made to the escrow account. There are the possibility of writing for grants from public and private institutions. There's a lot of money out there that could be raised that way. And the city has excellent grant writers, if the city wants to get control. So basically, I think that this modifies our contingencies to a more reasonable... In a more reasonable fashion. Everyone has contingencies, and it's not uncommon for even big developers to pull out of a project months, perhaps even a year or two into it. We've seen it happen in Eugene many times before. Thank you.
So, okay, Greg, I've got you in the queue, too. I've got Claire, Alan, Chris, Mike, and Greg. My comment is that upon listening to people that have talked to us about this, I can understand that although the contingencies we put in place were simple, they were confounding for the business community. They could... And they wanted to... And I would have... I understand some of their concerns about what are they actually signing up for. On the other hand, I haven't seen anybody come back with a real proposal. So from my perspective, I would have been personally, just speaking for me, open to a lot of discussions about, "Well, how about this? And if we've promised this, then is that something that you can work with?" If there was a solid proposal that said, "Let's do it a different way," I would have been very open for us having that discussion. But so far, it feels like there's no there there yet, and that's a challenge that I have in this discussion. My challenge is not that I don't want to save Civic, and my challenge is not that I don't want something to work out. I just haven't seen the thing that's going to work out yet. Every day, I hear something that makes me think, "Well, maybe tomorrow that's going to appear, and I'm going to be... Okay, now we can take this to council and have this discussion." But so far, that has not occurred. Claire?
So my technology is failing me, and the articulate things I had written down have all been erased. But that's okay. I'll wing it. So I still think there's value in the city, as I said before, trying to be a part of this... To make this offer on Civic. I'm not, along with Councilor Evans, I'm not comfortable completely removing the contingencies. I could support modifying the contingencies and extending the timeline, but I would want to see some stronger language around demonstrated ability to... Or demonstration that they've obtained sufficient funding to capital to carry out the plan. So if there was a two-step process, so within six months of 4J's... My technology has restored itself. Within six months...
With articulateness.
Yeah. Of 4J's acceptance of the city's offer, the city council must be presented with a business plan that demonstrates the entity has obtained sufficient financial capital to carry out their plan. That would be one thing I'd like to see. I'm reluctant to remove the dollar amount. You know, I think we put it there for a reason. I'd be willing maybe to modify it down closer to 3 million. But I think there needs to be some demonstrated cash that's come forward within a timeframe. I'm heartened by what the city attorney shared, that the way the motion is drafted right now, we could make this offer, it could be accepted contingent on these things happening within six months to nine months after the offer. And if they don't happen, we withdraw our offer, and we are not putting out any funding, including park bonds money in that scenario. The other two offers do have serious contingencies that they will have to go through before the purchase is actually complete of the land. So we would not be any different. In fact, our contingencies might be less onerous in some ways than what, for example, Fred Meyer's going to have to deal with if they get the... Are awarded the bid. So there's a lot of complications, I recognize, out in the community around these three proposals and around what folks are trying to do. And partly, I feel like in spite of the uncertainties, there's some value in us giving us a little more breathing space to make this happen, but only a little. I'm only willing to go so far.
Okay, Alan?
I think it's still worth saving Civic Stadium and taking another shot at it. I believe what we did originally was an attempt to create some space for other parties to step forward and make a real commitment to rehabilitate and renovate the stadium, but that didn't happen for various reasons. What did happen, though, was very interesting. And apparently, there were groups of people that have serious discussions about stepping forward and partnering with the city, but they apparently didn't have enough time to pull it together, and they didn't like our 5.5 million requirement, especially within that 60-day period. And so I would have preferred, like the mayor, to have someone come and counteroffer us and say, "Well, we don't like this, we don't like this, we don't like this. How about this?" But nobody did, and that didn't happen either. So what this motion really does is that it simply buys us more time. I think there are fruitful conversations occurring that could save Civic Stadium, and there are people like Coach Lanana and other folks that could pull together a proposal to renovate and rehabilitate and create this whole thing, including a newer track. But I don't think they had enough time, and they were thrown off by the fact that we didn't have site control. So what this really does to me is allow us to put out an offer to 4J, and if they choose us, and that's a big F, then people can come and talk to us, and we can have this conversation to try to create something that would save Civic Stadium. And I think that could happen, and I think it's worth a shot. So of course, it's entirely up to 4J, and I think this change does change our scoring a little bit, probably lowers it, but that's up to 4J. I'm interested in Claire, if you had a specific friendly amendment, maybe adding in, instead of just sufficient... Or is it about halfway through, initial financial commitment shall be sufficient, blah, blah, blah. Maybe it's a financial... Shall be sufficient and at least 3 million dollars. Might be a... I think that would be something that would be accepted as a friendly if you put that forward. That would get where you were getting to also, Greg, which was lowering the amount, but not making it so strident that it scared people away and didn't allow it to work.
That's your motion, so he's the one who would have to accept a friendly.
Yeah, I was the seconder, so...
So you're... Can I respond to this? Okay, so you're saying that we should have a dollar figure in there of a minimum of 3 million?
Yeah.
I don't see a problem with that. Yeah, I'd accept that.
Okay, as the second. I would agree.
We know already that that's the minimum. According to Turner Construction Company.
All right, all right. We're not debating. All right, yes.
I need to ask a clarifying question then. So when I had asked earlier, George, what the intent of this was, my understanding is, boiling it down to sort of the legal basic intent of this motion, it's, "We're offering 4J 4.5 million dollars, and we will let them know..." If they choose us, we will let them know within 12 months of the date that they choose us whether we're moving forward. That's the basic of this. All the other language in there is really your intent expressed to the community at large as to what might make you comfortable in 12 months, saying, "4J, we're ready to proceed." So that's what I read into your motion. I'm not sure what this friendly amendment does because, in my mind, it doesn't change that basic legal intent. And if we're going to communicate something to 4J, I want to make sure we understand what your intent is.
Point of information. Yeah, so I'm going to ask this... Go back to Glenn with this. Would this be simpler if this particular motion that George presented were withdrawn? We go back to the November 27 motion and modify and amend that motion in terms of the dollar amount of the contingency and also the timeline, the 60-day period, to extend that to six months or...
So you're asking Glenn if that makes any...
Yes. Yeah, that's my point of information.
From a legal perspective, it doesn't matter because, basically, if you adopt this motion today, you have implicitly amended what you did back in November. What is absolutely necessary is that when you vote, we understand what it is you are really directing us to communicate to 4J. And whether you do it as an amendment to the one in November, or you do it as a fresh amendment that implicitly amends it, that doesn't matter. The form doesn't matter. It's the content that is critical.
So the only question I have about what you were trying to tell us, and George in particular, about the intention of this motion, if they put the number in, does that constrain it to that in terms of the bid we're making? Or is this just a message about what the intent council has for the public to know? I mean, I'm just trying to understand the difference between those things and help them do the best they can with it.
Yes. What I'm trying to figure out is by adding the $3 million number, are you trying to change what's really the new offer? Because in my mind, what I've heard so far is the new offer is 4.5 million with a 12-month contingency where the council really, for any reason or no reason, can say, "You're not moving forward." Because 4J is just going to wait... I mean, if they accept this, they're going to wait until you say, "We're ready to proceed" or "We're not proceeding." And so why you do it, 4J isn't going to care. That's not the way the legal contingency would be written.
So the question I have for helping us with this today is, is it better for us to do a two-step thing that has the actual proposal that you'd want to give to 4J and then a separate message about what you want people to know we're looking for?
From my perspective, yes. That would make it clear what we're offering to 4J, and then you would have the second motion that would make it clear what you're expecting to get from the community at large.
So I'm going to suggest, if the people around this table are amenable to it, that you separate those things, the message that the proposal to 4J, from a second motion that would include the message you want to give to whoever's going to try to meet what the city wants in a funding plan.
When it gets to his turn.
I think I'm in charge.
Okay, that makes sense, but I... And that, you know, I was thinking about doing this anyway, but I want to modify my own motion here and substitute the one-year time period down to nine months because I think that six months for proposals to come forward and three months to analyze... For council to analyze them is sufficient time. I don't think we would need six months, and that shortens the time period. And so 4J would be... I see what you're doing, stripping it down to the bare bones, and I think that's a good idea, and we can discuss...
I'll second that for purpose of discussion if that's the modification you're making, George.
Mayor, if I can then offer what I think is the first motion, just to make sure we're all on the same page. Move that the city manager inform 4J that the city's offer is modified to be contingent on a council decision to be made within nine months of 4J's acceptance of city's offer, that the council is ready to proceed with the purchase of Civic Stadium.
Okay with you, George?
Well, I can see why 4J doesn't necessarily need to know all this other stuff, but I think that they need to know our thinking behind it. Why, you know, I believe that they would want to hear some kind of a rationale.
That's... And that can also be provided. I'm just trying to get the motion down to where we're absolutely clear.
And then have another motion to go over these other elements, and then... But as long as that was provided separately as information, like an information packet...
Right.
I think that that would be essential for their thinking because otherwise, they're going to go, "Oh, gee, they just want nine more months to mess around." And that would inform them of what the intent of modifying the contingencies are. So as long as that could, you know, be presented concurrently with the new information from the first motion, that's acceptable. Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Do you want to read that motion one more time?
Sure.
And I'll see if you want to second it.
Move that the city manager inform 4J that the city's $4.5 million offer is modified to be contingent on a council decision to be made within nine months of 4J's acceptance of the city's offer, that the council is ready to proceed with the purchase of Civic Stadium.
And Claire, you were the second? Who was the second?
I seconded.
Oh, and are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Because moved and seconded, and it's been replaced. It's a friendly amendment to it, right? Right? Okay, so now we're back in this discussion, and I have Chris and Mike and Greg in the queue. Chris?
Thank you. A couple of themes that keep swirling for me in all of this discussion, and they're related. The first one is what constitutes a commitment or a guarantee, whether it's our commitment to 4J or some partner's commitment to us. What is the level? What does it look like? What is the surety that there is something tangible there rather than talk? What's related to that, then, what is the amount of that commitment? What constitutes a reasonable amount? I know that there's really passionate feelings that the amount is 2 million or 3 million based on a bid. But is that amount realistic because we want it to be or because it actually is? I've seen estimates of $10 million, and I would agree, that's probably high. But between 3 million and 10 million is a huge gap. And then when you consider, there are ongoing mothballing maintenance, taking care of costs. And if we ultimately acquire the site and we don't have the commitment, then we will be responsible for whatever money goes along. The 5.5 million was a figure that I will admit was relatively arbitrarily picked because it was to reflect not only the cost to rehabilitate, but also the cost to ensure that we do not wind up being left holding the bag in some sort of way. And so I don't have a line item, but I thought it was a reasonable figure, somewhere between 10 and 3. I'm not sufficiently convinced that 3 is a bona fide actual amount. I mean, I've heard it, and I've heard people say it is the amount, but when I had to sell my mom's home and I had to do all the renovations on it, I got bids on all of that work, and most of it turned out to be twice what I had gotten bids for. Any of you who have ever done a renovation project realize that the minute you open that sucker up, it costs a lot more than you originally thought it was going to cost. And so the bids we have are well-intentioned. I'm not saying somebody is acting unprofessionally or irresponsibly, but I think we're going with the lowest numbers we can possibly stomach because we want them to be the lowest numbers we can stomach, not because that is actually the reasonable and prudent number that it should be. 5.5 was a number I was comfortable with because it encapsulated all of those things that we thought could be involved, plus it demonstrated a commitment. And I hear the timeline issue. I think if we string 4J out, you're right, it lowers our score. Why would 4J want to be strung out for another nine months when they've got solid bids on the table? So I don't think it will help us in the long run. I'm not seeing the demonstration of commitment from us to them or from someone to us, and then I'm not thinking that this amount that we're talking around is a number that we really have any sort of a realistic sense of what it's actually going to be other than what somebody thinks it is.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. If the school board makes a decision in mid-March, which I think, as I understand, the timing isn't...
February.
No, February.
February.
Next month.
Well, that's when they first take up the process, but when they are scheduled to make a decision.
They are in the process.
They're... Yeah.
They're going to receive the recommendation on January 31st, deliberate on February 5th, and make a decision on February 19th.
But maybe...
Unless they...
What was that?
February 19.
Zoe Berman said 31st might not come. He might not be...
February 31st?
This is relevant. That's why I'm asking. This is very relevant. If it goes beyond March 7th, it could be an entirely new city council that makes this decision. decision. Because we'll have elections this next year, and a new council will be seated after the 1st of January. Maybe all of us, may not be. We don't know the answer to that yet. And so this decision becomes interesting, and it becomes interesting for the school board.
Are you making an announcement?
What's that? No, I'm just saying.
Oh, shoot.
I haven't made that yet. Don't get your hopes up. The point of this is that the school board, as I said previously, would be silly to make this choice for us, for our bid, under these circumstances. They'd be irresponsible. And while this gives, if they chose this offer, a chance for that stadium to stay standing, I really have, you know, if they take the... I don't believe for a minute that an opportunity will come through. I know that Coach Lananna discussed that idea, but my understanding was that he dismissed that as not possible by this time. So that was my understanding. As far as other people wanting to do this, there's a great deal of desire. I, for one, would love to see it stay standing. But there's nobody that has that kind of resource, and we certainly don't. And for me, this is the key point, is that this council has some other work to do if we're looking at the bigger picture. We have a budget problem that we may or may not solve long-term, with a long-term solution soon. And so we may or may not face an ongoing question about how to do that and whether it involves the public. There are issues around City Hall that may involve the public. And by that, I mean, we may ask them, "Please participate in this way financially." We're going to need the public's confidence. The public's confidence in the council collectively is not high right now. For us to make a decision to extend ourselves this far financially in our current condition would be very understanding that the public would then have less confidence in this council. So I can't continue down this road where we're taking more and more risk on as a city and saying, "Trust us." And I don't know why the district would, because if we decide not to, then they're completely out of luck with their other options. Or the other way around, it's not true.
Greg?
It'd be nice if I had a little more time to think about this, but since we are in the course of discussion, we are. One of the things, and I'd like to just address Mike for a minute on this, is we are all presupposing that the city's offer will be accepted by 4J. And even if the offer is accepted by 4J, and we don't get the commitment from the private parties that say they're committed to putting a deal together, we have the option of withdrawing that offer in a very short period of time and allowing the other parties that are in competition for this to be selected by 4J. Or 4J can do what they did three years ago and put, play for time, make no decision. So I don't see a tremendous amount of risk in the amended proposal that we are now discussing on the table as a motion. Where is the risk? We're not committing, we're not signing any contracts, we're not really committing any What we're saying is, is that we have a price out there. This is what we're willing to pay out of park bond funds for this piece of property. And, you know, it's like any business deal. If it doesn't work, if it falls through, we pull off the table because we haven't signed anything. No checks have gone out, nothing will have transpired. Am I correct on that, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes. Other than the time that would be spent by staff and by you and working with interested parties and analyzing proposals, this, the motion that's on the table, would not create any financial risk to the city. Because all you're doing is saying, "4J, in nine months, we will let you know whether we're ready and willing to write you a check for $4.5 million."
And that may not be acceptable to 4J.
Correct.
So...
We've got Betty, and then Alan, and then George, and Claire.
Thank you. I think the risk is that this stadium will be destroyed. I think 4J will not consider this a real offer. They've said that they have a deadline. We've asked before if they could wait, and they have a time that they want to decide. And I think that talking about nine months makes it easy for them to say, "This is not really an offer." So I'm very concerned about that. I think we all ought to go out and look at Wayne Morse's statue, and a man of real courage who did take chances. But if this is all we have, I will probably vote for the motion, but I think it's tantamount to saying, "We aren't making a real offer." Thank you.
Alan?
So all of the offers are actually contingent. There is no certainty in any of this for 4J, unfortunately for them. They all have things in there that are out of control, the party making the offer, either zone changes or permits that are required to happen that may or may not happen. And so I don't think our offer then becomes any less certain to 4J than the other offers. I don't know if people can pull together a deal. I hope they can, I think they can, I would sure like them to. But I sure would like to create the space for them, for that possibility to happen. And I agree, this doesn't create any additional risk to the city. I think it's, the motion's crafted so that specifically doesn't do that. It simply buys us more time, creates that space, and allows this thing to happen. I don't know if $3 million is the right number either. But what this does is, within that timeframe, it allows people to firm up that number, firm up the plan. And what I understand is, the folks that are interested in this just didn't have enough time to pull this together, didn't like the escrow requirement, didn't know where the 5.5 million came from. What this really does is allow people then to come back and talk to us about that and create that plan. If it doesn't work, I think it doesn't work. And I'm willing to move on to it. I think the second motion that we haven't got to yet actually puts those kind of things on there. And, you know, if we said, if it's at least $3 million, it might be need to... And we say that it's up to the council to decide what the right number is, they have to bring us numbers and convince us. Otherwise, we say, "No." So I'm willing to move forward with this and the second motion.
Okay, I've got Claire and George Brown and Mike in the queue. Claire?
So actually, I'll wait, and I've got a second motion to propose if this one should pass.
All right, and George?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, you know, this is really the only way to proceed for the people that want to see Civic Stadium preserved and returned to active community use. You know, we've lost, you can count on the fingers of both hands, and it won't even amount to 10, the amount of architecturally significant buildings left downtown that weren't destroyed by, in the last 50 years, by urban renewal. There's very few we've lost. We've lost so much, and this is an opportunity to preserve an architecturally significant historical public space. And this motion creates a space of hope to move it forward. And it's true, 4J may or may not select this proposal, but we'll never know unless we move it forward. The old conditions we were operating under created tremendous uncertainty in the development community, and it didn't, they were just puzzled by the dollar amounts and the short timeframe. It didn't allow enough time for people to come up with a rational plan. And this will do that. This will do that. There's any number of organizations out there that are interested in redeveloping that property and along with returning Civic Stadium in the field to active use. So yes, let's move this forward, let's vote for this, move it forward, and inform 4J, and then let's get to work on the second part of it. Thank you.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Greg's right, in my opinion, that there's very little risk to us the way this is now worded. I don't think the district will accept it. I don't think we'll find the partners to go with it. So I don't think it's an actual, real proposal. I think we're wasting more time. However, I understand the passion, especially in the neighborhoods around the stadium, for trying to save it. And I feel that way too in a lot of ways. I've said it all along. One of the parts of this proposal that I voted no for in the first place and that still make it hard for me is this. When you put a question, as a principle just for me, when you put a question before the voters and they answer it, you have to stick with that. That's the last word, in my opinion. The $4.5 million comes from a park bond, and this wasn't part of that. The public wasn't asked if they want their money used this way. In my opinion, it doesn't conform to what they voted to pay for. So I'll vote in favor of this if we change the source of those funds, because I've never been okay with the idea that we use park bond funds for this. But I've said all along that we do have an asset that I don't think we should have, and I think it makes a lot more sense to own a Civic Stadium than to own a Civic golf course. So if the proceeds for the $4.5 million were from the sale of Laurelwood, I'd vote in favor of this in a minute. If anybody wants to propose that, they have my vote.
Okay, then. Greg?
I think I'm going to pass, Mayor.
Okay, so I think we're ready now to vote on George Brown's motion. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, and opposition, one, two, three, it passes. All right. So now, another motion, Claire.
So the goal of this motion, and I'll read it, but it's so for the city attorney's benefit, is to create some contingencies that create clarity for folks who are coming forward and what the intention of the city is around this purchase offer. So my motion reads right now. The city's purchase of Civic Stadium will be contingent on identifying an entity who presents a plan for renovation, operation, and maintenance of the Civic Stadium that satisfies the council. That entity must be able to demonstrate they have obtained sufficient financial capital to implement their plan, which shall include rehabilitation of the grandstand, playing field, and the creation of a viable sports and entertainment complex. The demonstrated financial resources shall be no less than $3 million based on the Turner Construction estimate of, and I don't know what year that was completed.
11? 10? 10? I can't remember. I don't have it with me.
We're passing the motion now. So if it was 2011, whatever date that estimate was completed.
You're second?
Second.
Seconded. So my question I have is, do you need time to work on this proposal and bring it back? Or what's your advice?
If I understand the intent of the motion, it is not to, in any way, shape, or form, amend the prior motion that was just made. And so at the beginning of this motion, I think you used words like, "The city's offer is contingent on." I think what you meant was that the city council is informing interested parties that in order for the council ultimately to accept or to inform 4J that it's willing to accept the property and pay the 4.5 million, then the following is what's necessary at a minimum for the council to approve.
Just a point of clarification. My actual language was, "The city's purchase of Civic Stadium is contingent on," not our offer.
Okay.
I don't know if that helps.
It would be good if I can look at that while you all discuss the essence of it, and I may want to tweak the intro a little bit.
Okay. So I have Mike who wants to discuss the essence of it. Is there others that want to discuss the essence?
Thanks for the clarity, Mayor. That's good.
George? Okay. Mike?
While writing that out, as this particular piece gives us up to a nine-month window, there is an opportunity to solve a question that this council kind of just threw a dart and tried to solve once before. And that is that you have an older Turner bid that said it's going to cost $3 million. The city manager accepted, and by the way, this is the professional staff we hire to tell us such things and have relied on before quite well, tell us that we should be looking at $10 million as a reasonable number. Those I know who are in this business and working it all the time said it's a lot more money than that. You're looking at $15 million or better because it's a money pit. So I don't want to put some future council in that same point again where we're arguing over what sufficiency means. I understand the basics for the, at least, $3 million, but I would like that to be more clear and to say, and to accomplish that. I would think we, since we have the time, a new estimate should be developed by, at least, you know, one, it depends on if it costs us a bunch of money to do, which I would doubt, but we should get better up-to-date information on what the specifics we're talking about, what does renovation and, you know, ongoing maintenance actually mean, and what are those numbers really, so we can stop playing this game. That's a friendly amendment, that we have a new estimate done.
City Manager?
What I would suggest is, before we would actually engage somebody in doing an estimate, we would find out whether or not 4J actually accepts the bid. If they don't accept the bid, then I don't think we want to spend money on an estimate.
In the event we are chosen, is the language I would use. I offered a friendly.
Oh. Friendly to Claire's motion? Claire?
I guess my concern about is I don't know what that would cost. We've been trying to keep the cost of the city down, so I'm not ready to accept that right at the moment.
Then I make it as an amendment, a suggestion, or a motion to amend that, should we be chosen as the successful bidder, that we immediately have a more up-to-date estimate created so that council can make an informed decision.
Moved and seconded, and in this queue, I have Chris, George, and Alan. Okay, Chris?
Yeah, the reason I think I might support the notion of that is, if the city accepts our bid, then we've made a commitment. And I would be uncomfortable making that kind of commitment without having firmer numbers. I think it would be reasonable. And so, yeah, I don't want to go to the expense and the trouble of having a bid based on, eh, maybe they'll accept our bid or not. But I think once we cross that threshold, then it absolutely is in our best interest to know what the realistic costs would be. Because I know that the bid we have now is about 3 million. You're putting a minimum of 3 million in your thing, which means if it's for renovation, operation, and maintenance, the 3 million's now used up, and where's the rest of it? Somebody could propose 3 million, renovate, and then there's no money left to do anything else. That's why I think we could offer just a little bit of protection to say, upon acceptance of our bid, we would immediately have a professional rehabilitation bid prepared. We could talk about the operational cost later. I mean, that could be a discussion the council could have. But I think we should have a rehabilitation bid prepared if our offer's accepted, and I would vote for that. If that's what you meant with your amendment, I'd gladly vote for that to add it to the motion.
The only, and I do have George and Alan in the queue, the only caveat I have to this conversation is, if it got accepted and then we had people coming forward to us with proposals, we don't know what those proposals might be. They might be, "You contract with us, and we'll take care of X, Y, and Z." And so then we won't have to figure out what all that has to be, because they'll figure out what that has to be. So I think there's another conversation that has to happen down the road to see what we actually have, that we're trying, yes, what we have to deal with. George?
Thank you, Mayor. I think you just nailed it on the head, hit it on the head. It's like we're putting the cart before the horse here. This is really not necessary. I think the language, by saying at least 3 million, that covers everything. Well, of course, you're going to do an updated estimate of what the repairs would cost, and you go to the companies that have already done it. Turner Construction is one of the largest construction companies in the whole world, vast experience. It would take them no time and very little... It would take them no time and very little money, they might even do it for free, to update their estimate, because they created the estimate, and it's a line item. They can look through and go, "Oh, yeah, gee, you know, timber's gone up, so we have to increase that." I mean, it's, that's not a big deal. And I really, I don't think you need to spend a lot of time talking about that. All that happens, you're correct, Mayor, absolutely correct, Mayor, all this stuff happens after 4J accepts our bid. That's when we do RFPs and say, "Hey, now we have this property, you know, we've been chosen, we have site control. Gaining site control is key to everything else that happens." Once you have site control, then people come forward with their, with their proposals, and they know that they have six months to do so. That, even that is not a really big timeline for, of course, some of them could be, you know, complicated proposals. But, but I think that the bones of Claire's motion, that we should just go ahead and pass that, we need, we need to have something, we want to have a little codicil to our presentation to 4J, the first motion that we pass. So I think that they need to understand our thinking, and that this wasn't just capricious, that this was to, to limit the city's risk and make sure that, you know, council has enough time to, first of all, the proposers have enough time to submit proposals, where the proposals, and that council has enough time to analyze them, and then accept them, and go ahead with our purchase. That's just called doing due diligence. That's, that's what we need to do. And, you know, I'd just like to go back, we keep hearing about the $10 million figure. That was the, I've mentioned it a couple times, but somehow it seems like it keeps slipping by. That was the Cadillac Plan. That was the Cadillac Plan of the Chamber of Commerce's contractor members in the building trade. So they also had a bear, you know, the minimum plan to get it back open, and that was for $2.1 million, which matched Turner's almost to the dollar. So we've already had two very reputable estimates of rehabbing the grandstand, and we really need to kind of forget about the $10 million figure and move on from that. We'll, we'll be hearing updated if the city accepts our offer. Thanks.
Alan and Greg?
So I think it's a good idea too, but nobody who is going to cough up $3 million is gonna proceed without doing this estimate. So there's absolutely no reason for the city to do it. There is, there is nobody with, who's gonna have that money at risk is not gonna have a good idea of how much it's gonna cost. So I think it's implicit that, as part of the financial plan that people bring back to do this, and rehabilitate and make it useful as a sports and entertainment complex, they will already do that. So I don't think we need to spend the money to do that at all. I don't support that. And, and so as to the $3 million number, I think that what you were trying to put that number in there for, Claire, was actually to not come up with the entirety of what the package looks like, but at least $3 million, which we know covers the renovation costs. The rest of the plan says, "Here's how we're gonna operate, here's what we're gonna do, here's what the financing is, here's what's gonna happen." And I think one of the things that scared people off in the first one was, we said, "We don't care about all that, really, we really want an escrow account that protects us from anything and everything." What we're changing here is saying, "Come up with $3 million to renovate the thing, and then come up with a legitimate plan." It's still up to us to figure out if we think that plan's legit or not. And we'll have staff evaluate it, and we'll have this new estimate that the third party will, will create, that will be a professional estimate, because they're not gonna put at risk their dollars without that. I just can't even see that happening. So I think that that all plays out over that, that nine-month period, and moves it forward. So I don't think that this, this motion's actually necessary.
And we're on Mike's motion right now, not Claire's. And I've got Greg and Mike. Mike, you just, yeah.
You know, I want to, I want to point out this, and I think we're getting a little bit too far over our skis. We're a policymaking body. I don't see anybody around this table who has the, unless I'm mistaken, has the construction expertise to make these kinds of determinations or comments. So I suggest that we pull back from the minutia of what are potential proposals, and kind of stick to the policy piece and simplify this, because we're never going, this, this is quicksand that we're never gonna get out of. And I think that we go back to simplifying what, what Counselor Clark has put out. I'm in favor of saying, "Look, $3 million is the floor, and then we figure out the rest later." But the minimum to play ball is for you to put $3 million bucks on the table. End of story.
All right, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. What I was trying to prevent with my additional motion there was that the council at some point in the future could decide not to renovate the station, but the stadium, but to simply accept someone's plans for how to use it, or, or to make use of that space that wouldn't involve that, in which case we're stuck with a liability. That's what I was trying to avoid. But I think a more, and I think the mayor's also correct, that why not put that on someone else to do? If they're serious about coming forward to do this, they're likely going to rebuild and renovate, which takes off the table those plans that don't involve serious capital renovating that stadium. I like that. So if we can alter the motion, I'll take, I'll withdraw my, if we can alter the motion to suggest that any credible proposal involves certainly the third party's professional estimate of the renovation of the stadium, and let them pay for it. It doesn't do that, that's why I want to make sure of it.
So you want it to be explicit that there will be...
They're gonna get an estimate for renovating the stadium.
A professional estimate?
Yep.
I don't see...
That's part of their plan.
Any, I don't think it detracts from the motion to add that in, so I would accept that as a friendly amendment.
Cool. Then I withdraw my motion.
And the second to yours?
I think it was George.
It's useless, but I'll accept it.
All right, then.
Harmless.
All right. So now, thank you, thank you, and now we're back to your motion, and...
Can we read the motion again? I've kind of lost track.
Yeah, so I haven't slotted in the friendly amendment, but I've reframed the very beginning of it to reflect the advice of the city attorney. So it reads, "Move that the city manager inform interested parties that the council's future purchase of Civic Stadium will at minimum be contingent on identifying an entity who presents a plan for renovation, operation, and maintenance of the Civic Stadium that satisfies the council. This plan will include an updated renovation estimate. That entity must be able to demonstrate they have obtained sufficient financial capital to implement their plan, which shall include rehabilitation of the grandstand, playing field, and the creation of a viable sports and entertainment complex. The demonstrated financial resources shall be no less than $3 million." We could just, we could say, "Based on the Turner Construction estimate," or we could just stop it there.
Based on the new estimate.
We'll just leave it there.
We don't know, we just leave it there.
The demonstrated financial resource shall be no less than $3 million.
Counselor Brown?
Okay. Well, I, just, it's a small change, but I would change entity to entities, because we don't know, there could be a combination of, I see one possibility of a combination of companies, and, and we, you know, there's already the escrow account that's building up, and they would be one, one of the parties in the mix, and that money is, is dedicated strictly to the renovation, and Friends of Civic would turn it over to whoever, you know, the general contractor, the operator picks, or the city picks, or, so maybe entities. And then, then I didn't hear a, a six-month, was there a six-month time period in there?
I didn't include it because we've got this contingency.
Oh, I see, in the other one. Okay, sure, all right, I get it.
But that one only said nine, right?
Nine.
Nine months, but it's six months for to present it, and then three months for the council to analyze. I mean, that's, that was what the original one said.
You could include the six months. I imagine that this will get reported out, people will know that you're anticipating you need at least three months for your review. It could be when we back things up and figure out how this fits your schedule, that the end of this might, the end of the nine months might land close to your winter break, in which case it might turn out people only have five months. So rather than putting something in the motion, I'd suggest, let's wait and see when, if 4J accepts the offer, then staff can do the calendaring and let you know how it plays out.
George?
Okay, the only reason I thought maybe that might be useful is that, is like I stated earlier, it's just a little additional information to 4J, so they would understand our reasoning. And maybe it's not, I don't know, maybe it's not necessary, but...
Well, all I can say to that, and you can put it in or not put it in, but in fact, your staff is sitting here listening, they're hearing what you're saying, and they're going to be part of conveying what you, what you've said at this meeting.
All right.
All right, then. Anything else, staff?
No, ma'am.
All right. So we're ready to vote on Counselor Soret's motion. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, in support, and in opposition, two, it passes. Thank you. And with that, I think we've done what we can do. Okay? So we're done.